Call this meeting of the Westland City Council order. We begin with the pledge of allegiance led by Councilman Mike McDermott.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, roll call.
Councilman Godbout.
President.
Councilman Hirschberg.
Pro Tem Londo.
President.
Councilman McDermott.
President.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
President.
Councilwoman Sampe.
President.
President Hart.
Here.
Quorum is present.
Thank you. For special presentations and announcements, I'll invite up Devin Adams.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, council. Thank you for allowing me an opportunity to speak tonight. For those who don't know, my name is Devin Adams. I'm the Controller for the City of Westland and also serve as the Event Chair for the Blues Brews and Barbecue event. Also here tonight is the co-chair, Westland Chamber of Commerce CEO Kirsten Beckwith. So the purpose of tonight's special announcement is to officially wrap up our 11th Annual Blues Brews and Barbecue event. This includes a few special acknowledgements, a check presentation, and the distribution of plaques to the event's high sponsors. And as always, this event could not be possible without the support of city council, the police department, the fire department, the DDA, and the public service team. So with that, I wanted to take a brief moment and acknowledge each of you and thank you all for your continued support in making this event a huge success again. So of course, special shout out to Councilman James Godbout for your help in securing and managing event volunteers and also setting up the grounds. Your time and efforts are greatly appreciated. And another special shout out to Mayor William R. Wild. Without your vision, leadership, and guidance, Blues wouldn't exist. So thank you again for giving us the tools to pull this event off, and your time and efforts are greatly appreciated on this event as well. As we do each year, the team secures various civic groups for this event and compensates them for their services with event proceeds. So our 2022 event volunteer groups are as follows. We have Knowledge Network, Westland Commits, Westland Rotary Club, Wildwood Elementary PTO, Escot Youth Development, St. John's Church, United Community International, the Westland Meteors, Norwain Community Citizens Council, Westland Youth Assistance, Westland Youth Athletic Association, Friends of the Library, Westland Civitans Club, Westland Lions Club, Knights of Columbus, the Westland Democratic Club, and lastly, the Westland J.C.s. All of these civic groups put in many hours to help ensure the success of Blues. Their scope includes anything from ground setups to entrance greeters to pouring the actual beverages. Based on the amount of hours served, we worked out a formula for their payouts. And with me tonight, I have a check for $10,325, which represents the total amount to be distributed back to these community groups for 2022 alone. With this being our 11th annual event and the city paying out over 10,000 of various civic groups each year, the total amount donated back to the community is over $110,000 today. So I just wanted to point that out. This event could also not be possible without the financial support from all of our event sponsors. In the audience tonight, we have representatives from both BPM Landscape Contractors and the Wayne Ford Civic League. These were two of our top sponsors for 2022, and tonight, we're going to take a moment to show our appreciation by acknowledging them publicly and then presenting a couple of plaques. So as you can see, it takes a lot of effort and support from a lot of different people to pull this event off. So again, thank you all. With this, I'd like to call down the mayor and council president Jim Hart to help us with the check photo and the sponsor plaques. And after the photo, I'll call up each sponsor individually to receive their plaque and have an opportunity to say a few words. Kirsten?
So mayor? So again, this check represents total amount paid out to the city groups this year. Kirsten?
I'll write myself there.
And then the first plaque I'd like to bring up is for the Wayne Ford Civic League in recognition and appreciation for supporting and sponsoring the City of Westland's annual Blues Brews and Barbecue event. Here's your high sponsor appreciation plaque, sir.
Thank you.
Mike, is there is it? If you want it, only if you want it.
Let's do it again.
And then lastly, we have another plaque to present from PP Landscape Contractors in recognition and appreciation for supporting and sponsoring the City of Westland's annual Blues Brews and Barbecue event. Thank you.
We just want to say thank you for allowing us to be a part of the community. We had a great time. My son, who I brought with me tonight, asks me every day, when is the next event? Because he had so much fun. But we also had a great opportunity to meet a lot of the community that we serve. So thank you again. I appreciate it.
And then, good evening. Kirsten from the Westland Chamber of Commerce, I just want to extend our gratitude again for everybody who assisted in making this event another successful one. I personally would really like to thank all the volunteers who helped me in transition as this was my first year, especially James Godbout. James Godbout, excuse me, you've helped me out a lot, so thank you very much. And I also want to let everybody know that our 2023 Blues Brews and Barbecue event will be held on August 4th and 5th, and I truly look forward to seeing everyone there. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Again, as they said, thank you too to all the Westland charity groups that came out to support this event. We really appreciate it. So thank you very much. We will now move to our questions or input on the agenda. This section will allow a person to be recognized only at the beginning of the business meeting to address the council pertaining to items that are specifically on the business agenda. Questions asked may be responded to during the agenda item following a motion and support from council. Are there any questions on the agenda from my right? Any on my left? Sir?
Good evening, Arthur Warren, citizen. Under the consent calendar, item E, to amend the rates, or the water, I guess, I just need to know, are my rates going down? When is this going to take place? When is the billing going to take place? And how much? So I can be prepared when I open that envelope up in the next couple of months, see what's going. I just need to know what the rates are and why are the rates going up? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone on my right? Anyone else in the audience? All right, we'll close input on the agenda and move to the consent calendar. Is there a motion?
So far.
Motion by Councilman Hirschberg, supported by Councilwoman Sampe. Question on item E, 2.5% was been proposed on the introduction for water rates. 5% has been proposed for sewage. Double check me, Mr. Attorney, am I right? Very good. So we just had the study session earlier. That was a question. Are there any changes? Mr. Foswell, I apologize.
I get paid by the word here.
You got it.
So let me get a few words in. So the average, as we were told by the consultant who's in the room here, was about 3.5% on the average bill. Also, that the bulk of the increased rates, the question was asked, why are the rates going up? The bulk of the increased rates are, as residents know, we get our water from Great Lakes Water Authority. They're raising their rates. That's what's coming through, as well as our wastewater goes through the Rouge Valley system, and Wayne County runs that, and our rates are going up from there as well. So those two things are the majority of the reasons for the increases in the rates.
Well stated, and he does get paid by the word, as we can see, so very good. All right, are there any changes to the consent calendar? Are there any changes to the consent calendar? Is there any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
Council has approved the following consent calendar items. Approval of bid for professional park drainage services for the Lincoln Johnson Field Project. Administration recommended the low bidder sole underground at a total cost of $58,119. Approval of contract with Brain Media Technology for management of the Jefferson Barnes Learning Lab. Term is effective immediately, shall be valid until September 30, 2023, in the amount of $46,907. Acceptance of Asset Management Plan Report to be submitted as a part of the compliance plan is required by the Michigan Transportation Asset Management Council, Public Act 325 of 2018. Approval of request to reprogram community development block grant funds. And the last item approved on the consent calendar, introduction of ordinance 29W46 in ordinance to amend Chapter 46, Sections 46.148 and 46.149D of the Westland City Code to amend the rates for municipal water and sewer and industrial waste control charges. Moving to approval of vouchers.
Motion by Councilwoman Rakowski, supported by Councilman McDermott.
Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New business, item one, minutes of the regular meeting held October 3, 2022.
So moved.
It's a motion by Councilwoman Sampe, supported by Councilwoman Rakowski. Does the petitioner have anything to offer? Or you're good to go?
This is the minute.
Yep. Sorry about that. Thank you, thank you. It's been a busy week. All right, is there any discussion?
No.
Any discussion? Any dissent?
Roll call.
Any dissent? Roll call, thank you.
Councilman Godbout.
Yes.
Councilman Hirschberg.
Pro Tem Londo.
Yes.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Sampe.
Yes.
President Hart.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next item, new business, item two, approval of requests from Don Nicholson Enterprises, LLC to organize and promote the 11th Annual All-American Wayne Road Cruise, which is proposed to take place on June 10, 2023.
So moved.
All right. I have a motion by Councilman Londo, supported by Councilwoman Sampe. Now, I think I got it right this time. I think so. Does the petitioner have anything to offer?
None of this time.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Councilwoman Sampe, do you have discussion?
I do. I just want to thank Don Nicholson for being here today and just for all he does for the community. So very happy to support this. It's great that you choose Westland to do the cruises that you offer in addition to the car shows that you do to support local charities. So it brings business to the community, which, you know, feeds into just residents coming in and using our gas stations and food places. So thank you, Don, just for continuing to do this. We really appreciate you.
Thank you. Councilman Londo.
Thank you. I echo everything that Councilwoman Sampe just said as well, and I'm sure your cruisers are going to be very happy that Wayne Road is finished now. It's not finished. Well, majority of it's finished, so we'll hope for better weather next year. Like she said, you put on a great event every year. It really brings people to the community, so we appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there another discussion? Well, I was so excited, I jumped ahead of the agenda, so I'm pretty happy too. So at least I tried to. The clerk kept me under control. So thanks, Don, I appreciate it. Any other discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New business, item three, adoption of prepared resolution honoring Services to Enhance Potential, otherwise known as STEP, for 50 years of service as a nonprofit organization.
So moved. Support.
I have a motion from Councilman Londo, supported from Councilman McDermott. Mayor, do you have anything?
Thank you, city council, for taking a few moments tonight to recognize STEP and that their CEO Brett McColsky's in the audience tonight. With this resolution that we'll be offering up to Brent and his organization, it'll be signed by the mayor and all seven members of the city council and the city clerk. And if I could, I'll just read the first passage. It says, "Whereas Services to Enhance Potential is celebrating 50 years of service as a nonprofit organization. Founded in 1972, STEP provides support and services to almost 1,300 people with disabilities to succeed in their goals and life dreams." And it's been an honor. We've, the City of Westland has been partnering with STEP, and we actually have two members of STEP that are working here at City Hall, and I believe they're here tonight. So, city council, thank you for doing this, and perhaps we could let Brett say a few words as well?
Absolutely. We'll get through the business part right here. Is there any other discussion? Councilwoman Sampe.
Hi, Brett. I don't know if we've met. I just want to thank you for being here this evening. I know that there's some commissioners here from the Disabilities Concern Committee, so thank you for those that are here today to support STEP. I really would just want to thank you for all that you do in the community. As a sister to a brother that has autism and just special needs, there's not a lot of resources for families. You know, we often look for those resources, and STEP puts a great program together, gets them integrated in the community, gets them focused on what we call life skills. So just wanted to say congratulations. I hope that you guys are around for another 50 years.
Is there another discussion? Any other discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Mayor, can you meet me down so we can invite Brett forward?
We're going to get a photo, and then I want you to go to the podium and see whatever you want, so come right over here. On behalf of all of us, thank you so much, we appreciate it.
I'll just take a quick moment to say thank you for this, for sure, and really thank you for the support you provided to the community or into the community that when we moved into Pinkham Center back in 2018, I can't believe it's four and a half years ago since we did that. We merged two of our locations, one in Levonia, one in Wayne, and really didn't know what to expect. You know, we were looking into, moving into a larger facility. We knew that was going to be a good thing. We knew the building's going to offer a lot more things than our other two locations did. But what we didn't expect is really the reception that we got from the administration, to the community, to the school district, to the families. It has just been a wonderful, wonderful experience for the past four and a half years. So thank you. We look forward to another 50, maybe even 100 more years of doing what we do, and we couldn't do it without your support. We couldn't do it without the support of the family. So thank you again.
Thank you. All right, we'll move into citizen comment. Everyone speaking before the council should do so in a civil manner. Speakers shall refrain from abusive or profane remarks, vulgar language, disruptive outbursts, threats, racial slurs, or other conduct that interferes with the business meeting. Personal attacks on council members, the administration, city staff, other speakers, or members of the public will not be tolerated. The clock will start upon the first words of the speaker and will not stop while the speaker is recognized from the floor. It is the speaker's option to ask questions at this time, and the person questioned may choose to respond during the speaker's allotment of time. However, the clock will not be stopped once it has started. The clock will continue to run until the speaker is completed or their speaking time is exhausted, whichever comes first. Is there anyone on my right? Is there anyone on my left? Sir?
This is the public comment.
This is public comment. You get three minutes, sir.
Yeah, so let me start by first saying I didn't know anybody from STEP would be here, but I think it is such a great program. It's my favorite charity, actually, and you deserve so much commending. Good evening, I'm Gary Kaufman, a retired parole probation agent, and this is my second time attending a Westland City Council meeting. My first was in July, and I used my opportunity to publicly comment to announce the opening of my charity to serve and protect victims of abuse. Today, I'm here again to try to move the needle at least a little bit toward protection for vulnerable people, and I'll apologize in advance for being the vulnerable person who I'll be talking about tonight. Perhaps the only relevance that what I'm here tonight to offer has to the council's agenda is the fact that I'm a Westland resident. I have some newly made friends who sit on your council. I was offered help in July by what seems like just about every member of your council, and tonight I find myself needing more help than ever just to survive and also to succeed in my plans to soon begin saving lives. The victims who I mainly hope to save are patients in our cruel and unaccountable psychiatric hospitals and so-called protected individuals whose lives are irreparably destroyed by predatory guardians coerced upon them by our flawed and unaccountable probate courts. My knowledge comes from my own experience, the experiences of friends and acquaintances from various mental health committees on which I've served, and also from other sources. Abuse seems rampant in the venues I've cited and also almost invariably covered up. I want to share what happened to me earlier today, which from my viewpoint is emblematic of the difficulties and frustrations frequently experienced by the type of people I'm trying in life to help. If you noticed that I am wearing hospital scrubs, allow me to explain the reason for that. It was unavoidable. At noon today, I was in the process of being discharged from the psychiatric unit at Garden City Hospital where I was being treated voluntarily for depression and anxiety. Just about every hospital employee I came in contact with, with only a very few exceptions, was wonderful, beautiful, and inspirational. There are so many public servants and healthcare workers to be infinitely thankful for. I thought that I had already received during my short stay what the Rolling Stones once referred to in a song as "My Fair Share of Abuse." But to tell this story in its short form, at noon, things became a little unusual, unusually abusive. I was told to discharge that the things that they were returning to me constituted 100% of my property, but in actuality, missing were the clothes that I wore into the hospital during my admission, including my shoes, all my keys, and my cellphone. I requested that I be allowed to stay either on the ward or in the hospital lobby or even on the grounds outside on a bench until my property was found.
Sir, sir, I don't want to cut you off, but I have to. Your time's up. I apologize.
Thank you. Can I state my name again and address?
Gary Kaufman.
Gary Kaufman of 34601 Elmwood Apartment 333, Westland, Michigan 48185. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone on my right? Ray?
I do want to say, good evening, everyone. And I do want to regret 50 years of STEP. STEP has came a long ways. They have, they do a lot of different skilled buildings there. I go there, and I enjoy it. And it's, we all need, people sometimes need help. I need help. I ask for help, and I need it. You know, there's nothing wrong with asking for help. I feel sorry for this guy at the hospital. It's terrible. They need to be educated. I'm going to check into that. As mental health, because I am a mental health leader and I'm really big about, that's my passion. Also, I filled out that form, matter of fact, for registerly, for the police, and I think it's really good for dispatchers because it doesn't have to be a mental health. It could be someone have diabetes, it could be different things. That way, when the police goes to that person's home, they know, so what a person's going through. Also, Derek, thank you. Went to that fire department, and they have a nice truck. They gave me a tour of it. I loved it. And I even got a ride, so it was great. It's a good adventure. Also, one more thing. Melissa was there, the ribbon cutting, and we went into that. I went on this 360. It was kind of cool at the photo booth there. And they do private show, they do private shows, they do birthday parties. So I'm really starting to join this ribbon cutting because you know why? Because the businesses get to know everybody, even people with disability concern board. I tell them. So it's really good. Everyone should be welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Is there anyone on my left? Sir?
Good evening again. Just a couple of questions, just for some information. One to the fire department, that new ladder truck, has it arrived yet? Just hang on for a second. Also, we have a lot of road construction here, and probably to the Department of Public Works, if we could get some idea when some of those projects will be completed before the winter time, something like, you know, Warren Avenue and all the rest of those roads. And since I was talking about the water rate, you never did tell me when I was going to get that new bill. Okay. And also the question of, over the past period, you know, we had a lot of issues with lead service lines. So if you're still incurring any lead service lines, are they still being removed and replaced with copper as the water department goes, moves forward? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone on my right? Yes?
Good evening. It's been a while since I've actually been here, and it's good to see everybody here. I also will mention STEP. I've been connecting with them for, when I was with the Levonia Chamber of Commerce as an ambassador there and saw several ribbon cuttings and openings and was here at the Westland one, and it's just been really neat to see them grow, having been, having been someone who actually had the privilege of having a handicapped person in my house that I had watched for a week while his father was working as a teacher and before he could go to school. So I had to, while I had my infant son, I was also watching him, and he was a teenager. And it was just, it was a very educational experience to be able to actually be the caregiver for that time of somebody who was actually disabled. And, but it was also really, I tend to enjoy almost anything I do, so it was very enjoyable as well. So.
I'll just take a quick moment to say thank you for this, for sure. And really, thank you for the support you provided to the community or into the community that when we moved into the Pinkham Center back in 2018, I can't believe it's four and a half years ago since we did that. We merged two of our locations, one in Livonia, one in Wayne, and really didn't know what to expect. You know, we were looking into a, or moving into a larger facility. We knew that was going to be a good thing. We knew the building was going to offer a lot more things than our other two locations did. But what we didn't expect is really the reception that we got from the administration, to the community, to the school district, to the families. It has just been a wonderful, wonderful experience for the past four and a half years. So, so thank you. We look forward to another 50, maybe even 100 more years of doing what we do. And we couldn't do it without your support. We couldn't do it without the support of the family. So, so thank you again.
Thank you. All right, we'll move into citizen comment. Everyone speaking before the council should do so in a civil manner. Speakers shall refrain from abusive or profane remarks, vulgar language, disruptive outbursts, threats, racial slurs, or other conduct that interferes with the business meeting. Personal attacks on council members, the administration, city staff, other speakers, or members of the public will not be tolerated. The clock will start upon the first words of the speaker and will not stop while the speaker is recognized from the floor. It is the speaker's option to ask questions at this time, and the person questioned may choose to respond during the speaker's allotment of time. However, the clock will not be stopped once it has started. The clock will continue to run until the speaker is completed or their speaker, their speaking time is exhausted, whichever comes first. Is there anyone on my right? Is there anyone on my left? Sir?
This is the public comment.
This is public comment. You get three minutes, sir.
Yeah, so, well, let me start by first saying I didn't know anybody from STEP would be here, but I think it is such a great program. It's my favorite charity, actually, and you deserve so much commending. Good evening. I'm Gary Kaufman, a retired parole probation agent, and this is my second time attending a Westland City Council meeting. My first was in July, and I used my opportunity to publicly comment to announce the opening of my charity to serve and protect victims of abuse. Today, I'm here again to try to move the needle at least a little bit toward protection for vulnerable people, and I'll apologize in advance for being the vulnerable person who I'll be talking about tonight. Perhaps the only relevance that what I'm here tonight to offer has to the council's agenda is the fact that I'm a Westland resident. I have some newly-made friends who sit on your council. I was offered help in July by what seems like just about every member of your council, and tonight I find myself needing more help than ever just to survive and also to succeed in my plans to soon begin saving lives. The victims who I mainly hope to save are patients in our cruel and unaccountable psychiatric hospitals and so-called protected individuals whose lives are irreparably destroyed by predatory guardians coerced upon them by our flawed and unaccountable probate courts. My knowledge comes from my own experience, the experiences of friends and acquaintances from various mental health committees on which I've served, and also from other sources. Abuse seems rampant in the venues I've cited and also almost invariably covered up. I want to share what happened to me earlier today, which from my viewpoint is emblematic of the difficulties and frustrations frequently experienced by the type of people I'm trying in life to help. If you noticed that I am wearing hospital scrubs, allow me to explain the reason for that. It was unavoidable. At noon today, I was in the process of being discharged from the psychiatric unit at Garden City Hospital where I was being treated voluntarily for depression and anxiety. Just about every hospital employee I came in contact with, with only a very few exceptions, was wonderful, beautiful, and inspirational. There are so many public servants and healthcare workers to be infinitely thankful for. I thought that I had already received during my short stay what the Rolling Stones once referred to in a song as "My Fair Share of Abuse." But to tell this story in its short form, at noon, things became a little unusual, unusually abusive. I was told to discharge that the things that they were returning to me constituted 100% of my property, but in actuality, missing were the clothes that I wore into the hospital during my admission, including my shoes, all my keys, and my cellphone. I requested that I be allowed to stay either on the ward or in the hospital lobby or even on the grounds outside on a bench until my property was found.
Sir, sir, I don't want to cut you off, but I have to. Your time's up. I apologize.
Thank you. Can I state my name again and address?
Gary Kaufman.
Gary Kaufman of 34601 Elmwood, apartment 333, Westland, Michigan 48185. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone on my right?
I do want to say, good evening, everyone. And I do regret 50 years of STEP. STEP has came a long ways. They have, they do a lot of different skilled buildings there. I go there, and I enjoy it. And it's, it's, we all need, people sometimes need help. I need help. I ask for help, and I need it. You know, it's, it's nothing wrong in asking for help. I feel sorry for this guy at the hospital. It's terrible. They need to be educated. I'm going to check into that. As mental health, because I am a mental health leader, and I'm really big about, that's my passion. Also, I filled out that form, matter of fact, for registrally, for the police. And I think it's really good for dispatchers because it doesn't have to be a, a mental health. It could be someone had diabetes. It could be different things. That way, when the police goes to that person's home, they know, so, what a person's going through. Also, Derek, thank you. Went to that fire department, and they have a nice truck. They gave me a tour of it. I loved it. And I even got a ride, so it was great. It's a good adventure. Also, one more thing. Melissa was there, the ribbon cutting. And we went into that. I went on this 360. It was kind of cool at the photo booth there. And they do private show, they do private shows, they do birthday parties. So, I'm really starting to join this ribbon cutting because you know why? Because the businesses get to know everybody, even people with disability concern board. I tell them. So, it's really good. Everyone should be welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Is there anyone on my left?
Good evening again. Just a couple of questions, just for some information. One to the fire department, that new ladder truck, has it arrived yet? Just hang on for a second. Also, we have a lot of road construction here, and probably to the Department of Public Works, if we could get some idea when some of those projects will be completed before the winter time, something like, you know, Warren Avenue and all the rest of those roads. And since I was talking about the water rates, you never did tell me when I was going to get that new bill. Okay. And also the question of, over the past period, you know, we had a lot of issues with lead service lines. So, if you're still incurring any lead service lines, are they still being removed and replaced with copper as, as, as the water department goes, moves forward? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone on my right?
Good evening. It's been a while since I've actually been here, and I, it's good to see everybody here. I also will mention STEP. I've been connecting with them for, with, when I was with the Livonia Chamber of Commerce as an ambassador there and saw several ribbon cuttings and openings and was here at the Westland one, and it's just been really neat to see them grow, having been, having been someone who actually had the privilege of having a handicapped person in my house that I had watched for a week while his father was working as a teacher and before he could go to school. So, I had to, while I had my infant son, I was also watching him, and he was a teenager. And it was just, it was just, it was a very educational experience to be able to actually be the caregiver for that time of somebody who was actually disabled and, and, but it was also really, I tend to enjoy almost anything I do, so it was very enjoyable as well. So, again, Emily Baumann, I think I forgot to mention my name, Emily Baumann. And I do want to just mention that we are getting to the end of a campaign season where we've got an election coming up on November 8th, as everyone knows, although you might already have your ballot if you have absentee. And I do want to invite people to a meet and greet that I'm having this Saturday at Homestead Kitchen right here in Westland because I've actually been at, you know, making the rounds with First State Senate. So, from 1:00 to 3:00, we are actually having a food drive as well because that's one of the things that we are very concerned with, and so we're having a food drive, non-perishable items, of course. Again, 1:00 to 3:00 on Saturday, October 22nd. I also just want to mention, I don't know, have I not been here? I don't know if you recognize Pregnancy Loss Awareness Month. This is Pregnancy Loss Awareness Month. Saturday was Pregnancy Loss Awareness Day for all, for miscarriages and stillbirths. And being someone that had, has experienced that multiple times, sadly, it's really important that, you know, that we recognize some of that stuff and remember that there's a lot of hurting people right now with all of that. So, I do want to mention that, and I don't think I said anything else, but I think that's it. So, again, Emily Baumann, resident of Westland, and thank you very much, and have a great evening.
Thank you. Is there anyone on my left? Anyone on my right? All right, we'll close citizen comments and move to comments from the administration. Mayor?
Thank you, City Council. Just a couple of quick announcements and then one piece of business. First thing is on, on the water and sewer rates. Those will go into effect in the March billing of 2023. As far as the Warren Road construction, they, it was going to be in two phases. One, they were going to do the concrete repairs, and the second part would be the asphalt overlay. They were hoping to do the concrete repairs in the fall and the asphalt overlay in the spring, but the crew has been working pretty expediently, so it looks like they're going to do both phases currently. We've asked them to have all their construction wrapped up in the barrels off the road by November 15th is the latest, as we kick off our shop and dine season in Westland. So, the good news is it looks like we were a little nervous about spreading that project out into two phases, but they're, they're working, they've done a much better job on the Warren Road than they did on Wayne Road. We'll leave it at that. So, Council, just a couple of quick announcements is Library Director Jennifer Roeth has asked me to invite everybody. There's going to be a groundbreaking ceremony for their expansion and renovation project, and that's going to be on Friday, October 21st, at 11:30 at the William P. Faust Library Grounds, and it's open to the public. The next thing is, Westland will be having our annual Free Trunk and Treat event on Wednesday, October 26th, at 5:30. This is a free event. This year, we're going to be operating out of the parking lot at the 18th District Court, and children 12 and under are encouraged to come dressed in our Halloween costume, and we're asking that they please be accompanied by an adult. We kicked off our annual Veterans Holiday Meal Program, and that is going to be coming up pretty quick. We're offering our veterans a free holiday meal on November 19th for anybody that's active service or retired. You can contact the city, you can contact my office at 734-467-3200, or you can sign up on the homepage of the city's website. And then the last announcement is that we're kicking off the Neighborhood Service Program is, your department is kicking off their All-American Halloween Decorating Contest, and that runs now through October 31st, and you can nominate yourself, a friend, a business for any of the following categories: Best Autumn Display, Best Spooky Display, and Most Over-the-Top Display. And you can visit the city's website for more details on that. Then, Council, just the last thing is just a little bit of business. I wanted to let you know that through the city attorney's office, the city filed in Circuit Court on the long-vacated Leroy's Building on Wayne Road. I know this one's long overdue, trust me. So, they did file in Circuit Court. There's already some issues with potential ownership and some other problems, but I figured now that we filed in Circuit Court, we'll have an avenue to sort all that out. So, another thing, too, is the, the city, through Economic Development Department and city attorney's office, is also looking at the former Beaver Creek Building grindstone, and that one's got another issue that we're working ourselves out with that should be wrapped up by November. So, we're moving forward on both of those. Should be good news for a lot of people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Anything from the attorney's office today?
I'd just like to comment on the mention of lead service lines from my friend, Director Ramsey Elgrib. I don't believe we know of any lead service lines left in the city, but there is a procedure and policy in place, should any be discovered, either by city crews, contractors, or homeowners, that the department quickly dispatches to, to remove those. Some folks may recall that some decades ago, a lot of money was spent on removing those. In the more recent past, we've identified others, and, and there have been campaigns of sending out magnets to identify what type of line you have and that sort of thing. So, I think the department's done a really good job of trying to make sure that it feels comfortable saying it knows of no lead service lines in the city and has a procedure in place should any be discovered in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fasson. All right, we'll move to council comments. We'll begin this evening with Councilman Hersberg.
Thank you, Council President. As it was stated before this meeting tonight, we had a study session on water rates, and those won't go into effect for a while, but we, we got really into details on the water rates and how they're calculated. We looked at our fund, we looked at different scenarios on different levels of rates that we could implement over the next couple of years. It does look like an average, I think it was 2.5%. I think somebody said 3.5%, but our paperwork said 2.5%. But it's going to be different for everybody depending on usage. I've asked for some of this information since I've gotten on council, and we did a in-depth water rate study, and we finally got some really good information. And I hope to have more discussions with the rest of council to see how, how we can go about this moving forward, how we can stabilize the rates, or if there's things residents can do differently to, to keep the rates down or from skyrocketing out of control. So, that's that on that. Don Nicholson, good luck on the Wayne Road cruise this year. I know that's been taken off a little bit slower than the Heinz Drive Cruise has. So, if there's anything that we can do to help, please reach out and let us know. And then I just want to remind everybody, I'm sure you've all seen the political ads, but there is an election coming up, so just remember to vote, and if you don't vote, don't complain. That's it for me. Thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Sampi.
Thank you, Council President. I hope everyone's doing well. Like Councilman Hersberg said, we did have two study sessions, so it's been a, a longer evening for us, but very informative, as, you know, I'll echo what was said. So, I do hope that we can share more information here coming up. It was a busy, busy weekend, this past weekend in Westland. There was a lot of great events going on, so I just wanted to acknowledge two events that happened. Both the Westland Police and Firefighters had a fun game on Saturday. It was a charity hockey game, and they were raising money for the Westland Goodfellows. So, I was able to stop by. I think it was great to see the community out there, a lot of people bidding on selling auction items, regular raffle prizes as well. So, I wanted to acknowledge Officer Marjorie Kelly, who did a really great job. So, this is the second event, I believe, that she did for the community within a couple of months. So, so thank you so much for, for that. I think next year probably is just going to get bigger and better, so. Also, congratulations to the Norway Citizens Council. They held a Harvest Fest on Saturday. I really wanted to attend. My son had homecoming, so unfortunately, I was running around with last-minute things, but the pictures online looked beautiful, and there's a lot of smiling faces out there. I really love that we can do that type of thing in the community and just do family fun, you know, kind of bringing that back. So, congratulations to everyone that made it a huge success. And then lastly, I wanted to acknowledge the Westland Police Department. So, they are selling these very cool patches this month. So, they have them on, I think, on their website, but you have a PartnerSquare site as well, too, so I'll plug that. So, the square site is WLPDCommunityPartnership.Square.Site. Hopefully, I got all that. But I bought one of these, and it's a really great fundraiser that they're raising money for many different charities, but this month, I thought it was very cool to support breast cancer awareness. So, I wanted to plug that. And then lastly, I wanted to wish my dear friend, Councilman Mike Londo, a happy birthday this weekend. And our next meeting is actually going to be in three weeks, so Monday, November 7th, at 7:00 PM, because Halloween is in two weeks. So, looking forward to seeing everyone at the next meeting. Until then, be safe and kind with each other, and we'll see you soon.
Thank you. Councilman Godbout.
Thanks. I just wanted to take a moment to thank Kirsten and all of the volunteers that worked for, on the Blues Brews BBQ event. Again, it wouldn't be possible without all the volunteers and without Kirsten, who jumped into it with both feet and, and did a tremendous job. Thank you once again for all your hard work on that event. And then the other thing was, on our consent calendar tonight, there was the acceptance of the Transportation Asset Management Plan. And I just wanted to thank Ramsey and OHM for all the work that they've done that goes into putting that plan together. And if you go through all 40 pages of that report, it details the condition of the roads and, you know, it shows the year-over-year improvement to our infrastructure. So, again, thank you for all your, your work and effort in, in improving our infrastructure and in putting that report together. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rukowski.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. I would like to congratulate and thank all of the volunteers for Blues Brews. What an extraordinary amount of money to go back to these charitable organizations. $10,325. That's amazing, and those organizations really are the backbone of our community, right? Be it what they, they share. So, there's some, you know, young, young professional organizations, Rotary, different things like that. So, that's wonderful, and congratulations, and I can't wait to see what that, how that impacts, what you're able to do for the citizens. But, talking about barbecue, so, you may not know it, and I, Jim knows this, but we have a very good barbecuer in the city of Westland. He calls city of Westland home. And Buddy Hammett, this last weekend, participated in the Jack Daniels World Championship Invitational, which is a barbecue cook-off, and it's, he turned out to be third in the world, third in the world. So, I'm very proud of Buddy Hammett and his Shiggin Ain't Easy team. They also cater, in case you ever want to enjoy some barbecue. But, you know, Westland's home to the third-best barbecuer in the world. So, congratulations, Buddy and Kristen, and that's really all I have to add this evening. So, we'll see you in three weeks. Don't forget to trunk or treat on the 26th at the 18th Circuit Court parking lot. Don't get confused. If you go to the mall, there won't be any trick-or-treating there for you. So, go visit the court parking lot and then enjoy, have a safe and exciting Halloween. We'll see you then.
Thank you. Councilman McDermott.
If I bring a goodie bag, will he fill it with barbecue? Maybe. Okay, all right. So, want to start out by thanking Officer Kelly and everybody who participated in the great hockey event. Got a little spirited, but it is, it is hockey after all, so we're, we're excited to have a spirited contest. Really, we should put a, we have the contract for the, the police, but we should put a stipend in there for Officer Kelly for all the event planning she does and maybe give her a second job title. So, thank you for that, and thank you for bringing this event back after many years of it not happening. So, we really, we really appreciate that. And thank you to all the police and fire who participated. Fire did get a win in this one, so police got them in the softball game. It looks like the fire's got the better hockey team here. I want to thank the Norway Community Citizens Council. I want to thank Annette, Christina, Joanne, and all the members of the Citizens Council. I had the chance to be out there volunteering myself at the great Fall Harvest Fest. I saw Councilman Godbout out there as well this weekend. It truly is a great event for everybody, not just in the Norway community, but throughout Westland. And I know there's many months that go into planning that and getting all the candy and the pony rides and the pumpkins together, so thank you to the Citizens Council for doing that each and every year. I want to thank all the civic groups that volunteered for Blues Brews and BBQ, and thank you to our sponsors, Civic League. Each and every year, you guys make that a great event. Thank you for, to Devon and to Councilman Godbout, who coordinate all the volunteers that show up there and all the groups that participate each and every year. We don't have a paid staff there. This is all done on your volunteer work, so thank you for coming out each and every group and doing it year after year. Thanks to Don for all his work with the cruises. We're happy to have you back each and every year, organizing the cruises in Heinz and on Wayne Road. Thank you to the folks at STEP. I live right by you guys, and it's, you're a true treasure to the community, and you're really an ally and an asset for people who are differently abled and in the disability community, making sure that they have a great quality of life and, and can really, for a lot of people who just a little extra work could be able to get them out there on their own and give them independence, what you guys do for people in the disability community and those who are differently abled is truly tremendous work. So, thank you so much for the, the 40 years and then some of the work that you're doing and what you'll continue to do here in the future. As my colleague, Councilman Hersberg, mentioned, we have an election coming up. It is not a spectator sport. Democracy only thrives when you participate. So, I hope that not only do you go out and vote, you encourage your friends, your family members, your neighbors to vote. If you have an absentee ballot and you're still holding onto that, as we get closer to that November 8th election day, it's best to come and drop it off here at City Hall or in the ballot drop box right out front. If you mail it in too late and it does not get here by November 8th, your vote will not count, so you want to make sure to have your ballot in here at City Hall by November 8th. And don't forget to flip it over. There's stuff to vote on the backside of the ballot, nonpartisan stuff, judges, and three very important ballot initiatives. No matter how you feel, make sure to vote the whole ballot, front and back. As always, I look forward to some of the, you know, stuff that we can have conversations about here in the future. We had our water rates study session tonight, and as the city attorney had mentioned, it provides, I think, a great opportunity to talk about green infrastructure and initiatives that we can do to look at stabilizing water rates in the future. So, I'm excited to have that conversation. Always excited to talk about the possibility of a tree planting program and having a staffing study session as well. I think now more than ever, when we're looking at that safer grant for our fire department, we've got folks that are working on a grant. I think it's important to have that conversation about the grant renewal or opportunities to bring those guys on separate from the grant. So, really excited to have those conversations, and I know that some people probably hate me for bringing that up every week, but so I do. And then the last thing I wanted to remind folks of is coming up on the 24th of this month at 6:00 PM right here at City Hall, we have the study session to discuss the Marshall Plan, so we'd like to have folks in here as we continue to provide feedback on how Marshall's going to look in a future community and recreation center for our residents. Thank you, and treat each other with respect, and have a good evening. And as always, if you need anything, I'm on Facebook at Councilman Mike McDermott and at 734-890-2146. Thanks.
Thank you. Pro Tem Lundu.
Thanks, Council President Hart. I'm going to be pretty brief tonight. Congratulations to STEP on their 50 years serving the community. You guys do a great job. I've been by your facilities for many events, and you do a great job for the whole community, but really for, you have great programming for the disabled community, so thank you for everything you've done. Also, thank you to everyone that either helped plan or attended the Harvest Fest celebration in Norway. I wasn't able to attend as well. I was at a U of M football game, or I would have been there, but I know it's a great event. I did see some of the pictures as well, and it's a free event every single year due to the sponsors and the volunteers for that event. Speaking of volunteers, Blues Brews and BBQ, thank you to everyone that put on that event, that helped with the event, helped work the event. Kirsten, who's in the audience, did a fabulous job, and even Gretchen Heinecke, our former director, stepped up and came back and helped out, so I appreciate her coming back. Councilman Godbout, with all the volunteers, I know Devon Adams and the mayor's staff does a great job. Vic Barra, who's in the audience, I believe, as well, done a great job coordinating the logistics of the event. So, thank you to everyone. Battle of the Badgers hockey game, there's two folks in the audience I want to recognize, Officer Marjorie Kelly from the Police Department and Tyler Fugate from the Fire Department. They both stepped up, and for the last couple of events, they've helped plan and organize the event. So, I know Marjorie was sending me information up to the second, because I was doing some of the MC, MC work along with our former Parks and Recreation Director, Brian Harnell, so I want to thank him as well for stepping up. But you guys, you did a great job. I mean, you knocked it out of the park, really, so thank you. All proceeds from that event will benefit both charities, the Westland Police Community Partnership and the Westland Firefighters Charity, where all those proceeds go back to the community as well. Councilman McDermott mentioned it, but I'll remind the council as well, we do have a study session again on Monday, next Monday, the, don't have the day, thank you, the 24th, day after my birthday. We're not going to talk about birthdays, because I'm getting older. That's going to be- That's going to be in regards to the Marshall Project. So the public is welcome as well, so we hope you come on out. Thanks a lot.
Well, he was brief. Hi, everybody. Yeah, you just talked faster. First of all, I'd like to thank Councilman McDermott for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening. And again, I'd like to thank everybody who's involved in the Blues Brews Barbecue. It, it does take a village, Kirsten, the chamber, all, all the civic groups that come out, the administration. I, I know the, the mayor works the administration pretty hard for that event. It's mandatory fund, I get it, but we thank you nonetheless for all the effort that you put into it. And especially, I'd like to thank Councilman Godbout. Every year, he handles all of the volunteer coordination. It's no easy task. I akin that to herding cats, so we, we thank you for all the work. I know it's not easy, but I appreciate it, and I know the civic groups appreciate it as well. So thank you. So that being said, we do have a lot of events in this town, and we always do. We had a couple of things going on this weekend. We had the hockey game going on. We had the Harvest Fest going on in Jefferson Barnes. And I'm really proud of this council, because this council attends just about everything you find at any event. We're very approachable, this entire council. Our, our police department's very approachable, our fire department's very approachable, and this council's the same way. And if you want to come and talk to us, a good, worthy place to find us is any of these events, because we want you there, too, anyway. It's no fun if we're by ourselves. So come on out, spend some time with us, and take an opportunity to talk with us as well. All of these politicians will never miss an opportunity to talk to you, so don't worry. Come on up and chat with them. But we would like to see you. It's fun. I can't make everything, but I'm pretty sure there's at least one or two of us at every single event. So come out, come see us, have some fun. We've got a lot of stuff going on. I'd like to thank everybody for their time. I'd like to thank everybody for the study sessions earlier with regards to the water rate. A lot of good information. It, it is an idea and a plan we're trying to talk to about stabilizing the rates. Rates are going up, but I think the plan that's in front of us is pretty good, and we're going to continue to talk through it. And if I go, it makes sense. I think the blended rate, if I remember, Mr. Fasson was 3.5, 3.5. So if CPI is at 8 and we're doing 3.5, I think we're doing okay. So we're, we're under inflation. And basically, these fees are just passed through anyway from what we get.